It's okay. I don't think he's gonna hold big as shit.
Good evening. I'd like to call the September 11, 2023 Peachtree City Planning Commission meeting to order. If you will stand and join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to say good evening and welcome to all of the citizens who are out tonight. Glad you could join us this evening. Item number two, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right. Item number three, announcements or reports?
None from staff.
Okay, well, I will have just a brief announcement. This will be my last meeting as a chairperson, as well as a planning commission member. I have been serving for seven years, two years as an alternate and now a full term and two quarters of a term, and I feel like it's time to move on and do some other things for myself and for the city. And so I want to just acknowledge, first, the staff, you guys have done a great job, and I want to thank you for working with me. As you know, I got thrust into this position, and you've really helped me a lot, and I really do appreciate that. And I want to just thank both Laura Ann and Robin for all of your putting up with me and your time with me that you've spent with me, and just want to thank you for that. And then to my fellow commissioners, those who are here and those who I've served in the past, I've really learned a lot from all of you, and I know that you will continue to do great things. And one of the reasons why I feel good about leaving is that I was just sharing with some of my fellow commissioners, there are a wealth of, or a number of city residents who want to volunteer and serve, and they are really quality people who really have the cities, I believe, their best interests at heart. And I think that, for me, it's, you know, you serve your time, and then you move on, particularly if you feel good about those who are coming behind you. And I will share with you, we have some good folks waiting in the wings, and I feel good about that. So the time is right for me to do that. So just wanted to, again, thank all of you. There's no other reason other than that, I want to do some other things. And Robin, I hope that you'll keep me in mind as a potential volunteer for committees and things that come up like that. I shared that with the mayor and some of the council members, so I'll be around. But I just feel like it's, you know, it's time to move on and do some other things. So I just wanted to announce that my resignation is effective come this Friday. So the next meeting, you guys will elect your own officers and carry on, carry forward. So thank you for you guys putting up with me and sharing the day as with me. I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I do want to say thank you for everything that you've provided, your knowledge, your leadership in the position of chairman, in your service to the residents of Peachtree City, as well as this commission, not only as a chairman for the last couple of years, but also just, as you said, for the years that you had just been on the commission. You will be missed. Most definitely, you will be missed. But I know you will continue to serve the community, conserve the residents in whatever endeavors that you will do in the future. So thank you very much for everything.
Thank you for those kind words, guy. I appreciate that for sure. All right, we'll move on to item number four, approval of the minutes. Commissioners, you've all been given a copy of our minute meetings from August the 14th. Are there any changes, corrections, deletions to those minutes? Well, hearing none, then the chair will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from August 14, 2023. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as presented from August 14, 2023.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any question on the motion? Then all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposes? The ayes have it. All right, moving on to item number five, public hearing. This is public hearing PH-23-06, rezoned 2011 and 1999, Highway 54 West, from OI Office Institutional to GC General Commercial. And so what I'll do is I'll read the rules for the public hearing. I will then open the public hearing, and we will proceed accordingly. So here are the rules and the procedures. When the public hearing is opened, members of the planning commission will become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the chairperson declares the hearing complete. The chairperson will allow each side equal opportunity to the floor. Individual members of the public will be given up to five minutes to state their case. First, the city staff will present the request and provide an assessment of compliance with the city code. Next, those who are supporting the issue will be heard. And this includes the applicant. Then those who are opposing the issue will be heard. And then prior to closing of the public hearing, input portion of the meeting, city staff and the public will be given an opportunity to ask questions of either, both sides of the issue. And when the chair is assured that input is complete, the public hearing will be ended, and then the planning commission will then debate the issue and render a decision. So if you're here to speak, and you want to speak tonight, please follow these rules. Come to the microphone, state your name and the neighborhood that you're representing prior to making your remarks. Please keep your remarks under five minutes, and if you can, try not to repeat other people's comments. And please address all of your comments to the chairperson. And so with that, we will turn it over to staff for the presentation.
Very good. Thank you. So the property in question is actually two parcels. They are under separate ownership, but are proposing to be developed as a single parcel. We are located in sort of this northeast corner of the city. It's 54 goes out towards Fayetteville. Here's 54 going out towards Fayetteville. And you've passed, let's see, Sprouts on the left, and there's the large cemetery, then there is Publix, and you come to the intersection, it's a traffic signal with 54 and Sumner Road. This is the properties in question. They are currently zoned office conditional, and that's because when they were annexed in 2013 into the city, they were annexed with all of these properties in the office conditional zoning district. And there were a multitude of conditions put on those properties, one of which is staff is noting in particular is the restriction of any kind of access, vehicular access to Sumner Road. The property is within the Village Center, as you can sort of see on this heavy, dark outline, and then there's a bit of hatching over the Village Center. And its future land use is for office. And the Village Center and the comprehensive plan does call for, does say that within the center, land uses that are appropriate are commercial and office, multifamily. But I did want to also bring notice to this village concept, which is sort of this step down of land use intensity. It's based on this model. Obviously, it's, you know, the world is not perfectly round, but in theory, what you've got there is, within the center, you've got your most intense uses. That's your mixed use and your commercial kind of shown in the pink and the red. And then you step down to an office or multifamily in the dark brown, and then you step down into single-family subdivisions. And the reason that this is, is because what you're doing by kind of stepping down intensity is you are buffering your very low-density residential from some of your intense uses, such as commercial. And so that is why that property is zoned, or I'm sorry, is proposed in future land use for office, because it is directly adjacent across Sumner Road from some very low-density, there's your single-family low-density off of Sumner. The applicant is requesting to rezone to general commercial. This facility, this zoning district allows all of our commercial uses. Now, they are specifically proposing a car wash facility, but unless there is a condition put on the zoning that restricts the use to this use only, zoning to GC does allow any type of commercial use. So based on this, staff is of the opinion that the request does not meet a majority of the criteria for rezoning and does not recommend approval. However, as a way to, should the planning commission recommend to the city council approval, staff is proposing these two conditions. One, the very first one, is to carry that condition that is currently on the property of limiting vehicular access to Sumner Road. And the other is a 20-foot, 25-foot undisturbed buffer along Sumner Road. Sumner Road is considered a collector road in our ordinance, and therefore, a 25-foot landscape buffer is required. However, per our ordinance, that buffer is not necessarily undisturbed. And so staff is proposing that that we add that additional mitigation method of keeping that buffer undisturbed. The applicant is here and does have a presentation to make their case.
Okay, very good. At this point, what I'm going to do is open up the public hearing, and then ask the applicant here to please come to the microphone and give us your name and who you represent, and then you can add anything to the presentation that you may like.
Thank you, Chairman. Oh, that's a little loud. Forgive me. Chairman, planning commissioners, my name is Stephen Jones. I'm all from Taylor English. Here today on behalf of the applicant. I'm accompanied today by a whole host of folks, so just give me a second to introduce them. And I've got a PowerPoint that should be coming up. Got Mr. Chad Floyd, Peachtree City resident, home builder, you may recognize him. Mike Bodker accompanies me. We do a lot of zoning together. Mike's the former mayor of Johns Creek for 16 years. Jason Blinko, he operates the Foamworks location in Fayetteville. I've got Mr. and Ms. Floyd, Chaz Pants. Then I've got Mr. Paletta, who owns the property, his wife, and Mr. Carl Iles, who works with him. And we'll get to hopefully everybody in the allotted time. So Foamworks is an auto spa. It's not a car wash. It's not a spa because it has cutting-edge, leading mechanicals inside, as well as the chemicals that it uses. So Foamworks prides itself on being able to wash any kind of car. You know, if you go through a standard car wash, maybe one that's attached to a gas station, or even some of the competitors, you can't ensure that the car is not going to get scratched, because there's dust particles that get on those foam rollers, and it just, Foamworks does it completely different. Foamworks guarantees and prides itself on being able to wash any car, from the highest-end car down to your average typical car. But we tell folks you can take a Lamborghini through a Foamworks and feel safe, that nothing's going to happen to it. So that's part of the Foamworks model, is a Class A auto spa, more luxurious experience. Mr. Blinko can talk about community involvement and give back, and the fact that Foamworks hires from inside the community. A lot of Foamworks site leaders are paid exceptionally well because they take pride in the site. Foamworks takes pride in the site, more so than even the competitors. The entire sites are pressure washed throughout the week, at least one part every single day, trash-free. It's really a step above, and that's why they pride themselves on being an auto spa. So the subject property, Ms. Caillou, did a good recitation of the existing facts on the ground. This property was annexed as part of an overall ONI concept plan almost a decade ago. Since then, Mr. Paletta and it's his client to the north, Dr. Boast, have actively marketed these properties. In the past seven years, they've had no interest except for automotive-related uses, predominantly car washes. So we think that the market has spoken as to what this parcel is. When we go in and look at the zoning factors, which Ms. Caillou alluded to, one is the use and usability of the existing parcel, and whether it has an economically viable use is zoned. Except for Mr. Paletta's personal office and Dr. Boast's personal office, which they've used it for for some time, the market has not tendered any other viable use. And to point out, this is a bit of a car, automobile-oriented node right here. There's a Mavis here, an advanced auto parts, and a detailing shop right here. But if, and also, if you look at the zoning map, the zoning map shows a trend for GC up and down 54, and commercial uses up and down 54. So you've got GCs here as well, here, here, and here where the Publix is. So we feel that the ONI is an outlier. It's a bit of a spot zone in today's market as it sits. You've had a piece of it developed, but these pieces, the market is not pulling into the ONI zoning. It's pulling back towards the trend, which is there, which is the GC zoning. So here's our concept plan. There are a lot of considerations that we've taken into account in developing the concept, using the existing curb cut, utilizing this very strangely shaped track, because as combined, they form this right-angle triangle, which is difficult to develop pretty much with anything. So we've got a car wash, though, that works, and that's one of the reasons that the only interest in this parcel from the market after its zoning and annexation has been car washes, because it fits. And we think it fits from a zoning perspective, and we think it fits from the perspective of the existing uses that are surrounding. One thing that we did want to carry forward from that annexation is the prohibition on access to Sumner. So we've got a planted buffer here. We're okay with the idea of a buffer and the no-access condition, but as to the undisturbed condition, we actually want to go back and plant it with a double-staggered row of evergreens. The existing buffer out there, the existing trees, aren't a great buffer between the residential portion of Summer to the west. So we want to do a double-staggered row of evergreens up and down, and that will form a hedge row at the time of planting. And then we also want to do a privacy fence along the length to create a buffer. Only distinction is that we're at 20 feet to make the lot fit work, and staff recommended 25. So if we can earn your vote of approval, a recommendation of approval tonight, those are the two conditions we'd actually impose, the no-access on Sumner, as well as a planted buffer with privacy fence installed at the time of permitting, because we think a planted buffer, although a substantially larger cost, would work better than the unplanted buffer from a land planning perspective. So here's some renderings of the building, the massings. Again, you see substantial landscape features. You can see the planted row in the back, as well as some street trees. So we pushed the building towards the frontage to give it a, we just think it looks better with the building facing the front. And then you've got your automobile detailing stations in the rear. You get better visibility from the site, from passersby, and it also puts those vacuum openings and canopies behind the site. So that's Foamworks in a nutshell. That's the proposal. If you have any questions, love to answer those at this time. Except for that, I'd like to reserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal if necessary, Chairman.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
All right, very good. Then let me move on to public comment, if there's any. Let me see by show of hands, who is here to support the application? Is there, who's here in support of the application? Did you raise your hand? Okay. Is there anyone here in opposition? Okay. All right. Well, as I had indicated first, we'll let those who are here in support first to speak first. So you can just take, just go in order, as the rows you're sitting in. Again, please come to the mic, state your name, and what neighborhood you represent, and you have up to five minutes. So whoever wants to go first is fine.
Hey there. My name is Jason Blinko. I represent Foamworks. I actually do all the operations for Atlanta. And so one of the big things that, and I've gone to hearings like this before, and one of the big things we're always asked is, what can we provide for the city? And the biggest thing is that we're here to provide jobs for the city. I mean, we have site leader positions, assistant site leader positions, team leads, attendants. These are all viable jobs for everyone within the community. It doesn't matter, we don't have any age discrepancy whatsoever. You know, we want everyone to succeed in this endeavor, not just ourselves, but also our employees. And we really do look out for employees. I get to work with every site leader in the Atlanta area. We have about five washes right now that I get to go to, visit, make sure everything's up to standard. And one of the ways we do that is I go in, I do assessments on the site, making sure that there's no trash on the ground, that we're actually going out, talking to our customers, ensuring that the lot looks good from their perspective, as well as when we're driving by, making sure it looks good on that perspective. We pressure wash every night. The reason why we wanted to put windows by the roadside is it's just, it's a better look. When you go by a wash that has vacuums out, generally, you're going to see trash on the ground. You're going to see just the lot from continuous overdrive. It just starts to get darker, which we try to, you know, stop by pressure washing it as much as we can. But when it's in the back, it's not as visible, so generally, the community appreciates that a little bit more. Another thing is, we're really big into fundraising. That's something we've been pushing heavily, especially with school systems. I mean, I have a two-year-old son, so that's pretty big for me, is making sure that the community supports the children. So we're always trying to go out, talk to the schools, pitch in however we can. We're also very involved into our, sorry, the business side of things in terms of the chain of commerce. All of our site leaders are invested into that, so each one of them not only have direct email and contacts with that, but they try to go to the events as much as possible, if they can host one as well. We don't play, we don't play loud music like you see at most car washes. We generally ask our customers to keep that down, just because we know that is a hindrance, especially knowing that we're so close to the single-family homes. That's going to be a very big thing that we make sure occurs. And the decibels, because I've heard that before, there's not a lot of decibels between the vacuums. You're not going to hear that, especially with the hedges that are there. And then another one is asking about reclamation. We do recycle water. We use, probably about 90% of our tunnel is using recycled water, which is different than most car washes. I'm sure y'all have gone to your Tideawave, to the Canucaliber, any of those people, and I've worked for some of these companies. And I could tell you right now that they, even though we all say that, hey, we recycle water, they may recycle water for parts of their tunnel. We take it a step further, and we make sure that we recycle for pretty much 90%, except for your final rents and your chemicals. And that just ensures that, one, we're not taking up too much of the city, but also that we are showing we're truly green in our initiative. But other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Chairman, Matthew Dahlke, Smoke Rise Corners resident and also a local realtor. We'd love to see this, just because that area just does not have much and does not have a car wash. So for a lot of us, it's very convenient. We used to live in Trolith, and so when you went over in the, like, Fayetteville area, I think it'd be great for them to come in and spend money here. I think Peachtree City doesn't get a lot of things, and when we have residents coming from all over the place to move here, they look for things like, you know, just things that make their lives a little more convenient. So this would be another one that we think would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Joe Paletta. I am the property owner for the 2011 property. We've owned it since 2008, and we put it on the market a little over seven to eight years ago, and with the idea with the other owners there that that property is a redevelopment strip. So the homes, or original homes that are on those properties are old. They need to be either redone or redeveloped, and that was the idea of what we were doing. And it would be great if we could put an office building, like the medical building, that's three or four doors down. But since COVID, the demand for office space has really dropped. It's almost nonexistent. That's the worst part. If you look at Atlanta, what's happening is there's, there's just no office anymore. People don't want to work. They want to go home, work from their house. So we have had four offers on the property. They've been automotive and base. We have a Mavis across the street. We have an AutoZone or Auto Parts facility. We have an Ace Hardware. It kind of lends itself to what they're trying to do here. So from a property owner's standpoint, we think the property needs to be redeveloped to a nicer-looking facility. That's what people see when they come in from Fayetteville into Peachtree City. Right now, it's old, and we're not going to put money into it because we know it needs to be redeveloped and eventually needs to turn into something beautiful for the city. So I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else here in support, want to speak in support?
Mr. Chairman, I think it should not go unsaid. Thanks. I had the opportunity, as mayor of Johns Creek, to do all the appointments for 16 years, and I know how hard it is to find volunteers. So thank you to each of you for what you're doing, and I hope you'll continue to volunteer for the Peachtree City. They're very lucky to have all of you. As mayor, I, of course, sat not in your chairs, but in the next seat up, as the planning commission made recommendations to me. As a government relations consultant now, I have the opportunity to pick and choose my clients. And one would say, well, car washes are not always the most popular client. I will tell you that I'm very proud to represent Foamworks because I've had the opportunity to really get to know the owner, to get to know the employees that work at the different sites, to actually see them out of the ground, to see the pride that they take, the pay that they make to the employees, and how they literally help folks raise up from young high school kids all the way up to the management team that they have. I think it's a product that will ultimately you be very proud of. I think it'll be very tastefully done. I know that they are here to listen to any concerns and to try to deal with them, and they have in the other locations. I had the opportunity to present for them in Alpharetta. If you know anything about Alpharetta, you know that their development standards are extremely high. There's a reason why they call it Awesome Alpharetta, and they were very happy to welcome Foamworks into Alpharetta. I had the opportunity to speak with folks down in Macon, where they have three sites, and they were very happy with the after-effects of those now that they've been up for a while. So all in all, I can say this, I hope you'll give it due consideration. As someone who had to look at zoning holistically, I can tell you that land use plans are important, but if all that everyone's going to do is just follow a land use plan, then there's no point in having zoning cases. There's always exceptions. There's always reasons, and certainly marketability is important. I think at the end of the day, this will be a great product, and it's worthy of consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, can you give us your name?
I'm sorry. It's Michael Bodker, and I live at 11310 Donnington Drive, Johns Creek, Georgia.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in support of? All right, very good. Then those who are, excuse me, those who are in opposition, please, again, your turn now. You can step to the podium and give us your name and what neighborhood you're representing.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak tonight. My name is Regina Pitstick, and my family and I live on Wellborn Road, which is right off of Sumner. And when I look at the pictures of where the car wash is going to be, I can see my property, my land. And one of the reasons that we moved to Peachtree City a couple of years ago was because of the green space. And one of the things we really appreciate about that Wellborn neighborhood is that those homes have been there for 20, 30 years, undisturbed. It's a dead-end street. It's wooded, completely surrounded it. At the end of the street, it's woods now, and the thought of there being a car wash at the end of my street really gives me a lot of anxiety. But I want to just bring up some points that I took some time to think through, what the biggest pain points are. what my, what the biggest pain points are for me as a resident in the neighborhood. Um, looking at the map, uh, those in favor are saying that the, the space is, is general commercial. It's not. Across the street is nothing but neighborhoods, and in fact, down Sumner, they're building a brand-new development at the end of where this car wash will be. They've just built two new homes on the opposite side of Sumner that would also abut this, this area. Um, I am concerned about traffic congestion and noise. It's already somewhat noisy just living there because of the traffic on 54. The speed limit is fifty-five, people go faster than that as they come into Peachtree City from Fayetteville. And we've already done some modifications to our landscaping just to kind of absorb some of the noise with water features and stuff. Um, the congestion already is bad at that light. Uh, I've sat at that light for five minutes just to turn left to get to my street, day after day. Um, the, the development itself, um, thinking about the type of business, water runoff, pollution, potential sewage issues, we don't have sewers, we have septic. So I don't know where all the water would go, and, um, that is concerning, because we have had flooding in our yard. I'm also concerned about reduced property values as a result of the close proximity of the business to those homes, twenty-five feet. I mean, I don't, that would be like from where you're at to, to where I'm at, as a buffer to a driveway in my neighbor's house. Um, the impact of the quality of life for, for us living there, we talk about the economic value of bringing business into Peachtree City, which I'm certainly in favor of, but in reality, we're talking about eight jobs. Eight jobs to run this business, based on what I read in, in the information that was submitted. It's not going to drive a ton of revenue for the city from a tax perspective, or offer a ton of jobs for our residents. Um, we, we heard that they would have vacuums, again, back to the noise pollution and, uh, pressure washing. Pressure washers are loud, they're gonna do that daily. Um, again, back to the flooding issue, the vacuums, they are very loud, and they would be in the back of the building, based on the schematics that I saw. Um, and again, I guess my, my biggest point is, I don't think that is a general commercial area. It is surrounded by it, but it is an entire residential area behind this plot of land. And I don't feel that adding a car wash to a triangular piece of land as you enter Peachtree City is, is a way to greet residents into the city. I don't, I don't think that it's something that we should, um, really spend time, money, and effort on. And as a resident, that pays a lot of taxes to live here, I'm definitely opposed to, to this business and the rezoning from office to commercial.
All right, very good.
Hi, I'm Jill Jensen, I live in Wellborn Estates. And I'm sorry to say that my first point is that a mayor from Johns Creek is not someone I want advising Peachtree City on what to do with traffic. Johns Creek, Johns Creek is full of congestion and traffic and buildings. Additionally, even worse in Alpharetta, I'm sorry, but they can stay there. Hopefully, we have better sense than that. We agree with the planning commission that the space does not meet zone requirements, zone change requirements. I've lived off Sumner Road in Wellborn Estates for exactly twenty-two years today, back when it was a dirt road. Since then, Sumner Road has grown by three neighborhoods, and still has no cart path on a road that people believe is a superhighway, Sumner. Additional, of this car wash will cause additional traffic concerns. Traffic on the corner has been addressed once in the time I've lived there by the addition of a turn arrow, which has caused some time delays in getting home. As Regina indicated, sometimes several lights worth, which is a fact. We've already seen issues from the new school make it even worse. It'll make it worse again. We walk across that street frequently, and I'm concerned about getting hit when you add something like this. We don't really wanna back up the 54-74 issues even further. This is what it'll do. This road's always had water pressure problems for the twenty-two years we've lived there, little, literally to the point of dripping showers at times. Is this a good idea to rezonate an area like this, especially to a car wash? There are fourteen car washes within six miles of the proposed location, most within two or three miles, and I have never even seen the one that's in walking distance from us with a bunch of cars at. This doesn't even account for the regular or mobile detailers like the one across the street they spoke of. It's across the street, why do we need another one? Let's not get started with all the noise that it'll cause. Pressure washing continuously, as they mentioned, even worse, I'm sorry. Please don't forget, city council recommended more space, twenty-five feet, than their elevation of twenty feet. Uh, so it, it just isn't enough space to accommodate. I really don't wanna see the building from my residential neighborhood. I believe Peachtree City has building height requirements as well. There's a reason for zoning it office and not general. The people that build homes there did so on a quiet, private road. This will take away our peace and quiet. This trend for up and down 54 was really spoken to, it's a huge negative. We don't wanna become Riverdale, please deny this rezonate request. We do have acknowledgement from our other community residents that were not able to attend tonight. They are also opposed, and they're happy to sign a petition stating as such. Thank you.
Anyone else here in opposition who'd like to speak?
I'll just take a moment. My name is John Pitstick, I also live in Wellborn Estates, about a hundred feet from where this, uh, car wash is proposed. I'd also just like to point out that, as a resident of Peachtree City, I don't believe with the applicant that a car wash is a great welcoming, um, statement for that part of the town. Uh, I'd also like to say that, right now, there are like fourteen car washes within six miles that I can go to at any time. And I, uh, finally, I'd like to just, um, point out that the applicant has misstated some of the use of the property around. There is a single-family neighborhood that was listed as general commercial, that is actually single-family. I'd be happy to point it out if you brought it back up. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, uh, my name is Raymond Loyota. I actually live in the Bralain Village, but I have an interest in things happening in Peachtree City, so I thought I'd take a look at this and give you my comments. I'm not necessarily opposed, and I thought I'd wait until the, the residents adjacent to the property spoke. Uh, but I have some items that I think are nuisance-type issues that I think the commission should consider when they're making a decision on this kind of an application. There was a lot of discussion about noise. The operator said there wouldn't be a lot of noise. We didn't hear anything about decibel levels or anything like that, so, if for some reason, uh, the commission is, uh, inclined to, uh, grant the change, I think, uh, some kind of a noise barrier, um, beyond just a privacy fence should go in separating this property from the residential neighbors. Uh, I didn't hear it, maybe it's in the application, um, what the hours of operation are. Are they gonna be operating on Sundays, into the late evenings on Sundays? Could be a nuisance to the neighbors across the street. Uh, in the OI zoning, the way I read it, there are thirteen different conditions that were set on this property when it was enacted, and it all has to do with the double frontage and the fact that there are residential properties on the other side of Sumner. And I think all of those conditions should be considered, because they mitigate any of the nuisance issues that a commercial facility has on the residential neighbors across the street. And I had a question for Robin. Um, what were the conditions for the zone change that were not met?
Well, yeah, um, so normally-
If that's, uh, not appropriate at this time, that's just a question.
Well, it's a question, and, and I'm sure she'll have an opportunity to, to address it, but yeah, all your comments need to be directed, you know, to-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair. But you can just ask the question in general, and I'm sure she'll-
The question is, what were the conditions that staff highlighted, uh, that were not met for the zone change to be permitted? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak, um, in opposition? All right, um, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. And now, it, well, you, you have an opportunity. So now, it, it's time for, um, the commissioners to ask questions and then give comments to the application of either the staff or the applicant. So, um, let's start with, um, and Mrs. Jones, you may wanna just stand up, just in case there are questions for you. Um, let's start with, since we're gonna open it up now for questions from the commissioners, and, uh, we'll start with, um, Commissioner Hamler, any questions?
Sorry about that, thank you. A question for staff, actually the gentleman that spoke just a moment ago, uh, took my question, but I'll add on to it. Uh, what were the, uh, reasoning behind why, uh, city staff is not recommending this rezoning?
Well, so the, um, the six criteria that we review-
Sure.
Much of your planning staff is gonna rely very heavily on the comprehensive plan, which includes both the future land use map, the future land use map, as well as the policies and, and, um, concepts in the plan. And so, that's why we were trying, um, I was hoping to explain, maybe not as well as I should have, is that there is a policy statement in the comp plan that says, in a, in a village center, which this is located in, commercial, office, high-density residential, those are all appropriate uses. So on one hand, we have that statement that says the requested is an appropriate use in a village center. However, we also have this step-down intensity land use model that that village center is based on. And so, in this case, what we have is a village center that's been sort of stretched out on 54 a little bit, and sandwiched into an area that already had existing low-density residential, which is that farthest outside ring in that village center concept model. And so normally, what you'd wanna see is some kind of stepping down, and that's why the future land use map shows office there and not commercial, is because of that step-down intensity model. And so, um, based on that, we just, you know, staff just feels like that's a very significant impact on this request.
Gotcha, so just to repeat, the specifics back to you real quick. It's because city staff feels that it doesn't follow the village concept from a step-down perspective.
Correct.
Yeah, 'cause obviously there's a lot of density across the highway, but not within that area itself. And then obviously you have the residential behind it as well.
That's correct.
And then my question, I have one more question, uh, just a clarification question, uh, for the applicant. Um, you mentioned towards the end of your remarks about the buffer. Uh, and of course, about this, there's the city recommenda, city staff recommendation for twenty-five feet. Were you saying twenty feet, or could you clarify some of those, those comments a little bit?
Correct. So what we're talking about is twenty feet, which complies with your zoning ordinance. And within that twenty feet, what we wanna do is a double-staggered row of evergreens, which will be quite high at the time of planning.
Right.
And then you do a privacy fence on the other side, provides both an auditory and a visual buffer to the car wash. And then to address some of the comments about noise, the vacuums themselves are not loud, because the producers, the things that make the vacuum noise, we put those in vacuum enclosures, which reduce the audible levels down to that of a normal conversation.
Got it, okay, so you're, you're requesting twenty feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is, which can-
Yeah, whichever, um, whether it's twenty or twenty-five, and I'll be honest, I don't know it off the top of my head. But whichever it is, they're not asking for a variant, so whatever it is in the ordinance, they'll have to comply with.
Of course, yeah. Okay.
The site, and the site as is, is, if you see the concept plan, I have a trouble getting it back up, but it complies with all the dimensions on the ordinance, and so, oh, he's got me, thank you, sir. Um, so you'll see, these are all the zoning buffers required by the ordinance. And within the, and within the back buffer, recognizing that Sumner has an economy on one side, it does have, provide entrances into single-family subdivisions, but on the other side, it's GC.
Sure.
Plus the office that's developed in the GC to the north.
So within this concept plan, you're, that is for twenty feet, right there with the, the buffer, correct?
Correct, which then allows for you to do the double-staggered row of evergreens.
What would twenty-five feet do to the, the plan?
I don't have an engineer with us, but if you see, it's really tight. So if you see the forty right here, what the problem is, is the way that right-of-way was acquired, the best we can tell, along 54, this front buffer right here pushes right up. We could have a few more feet here on this side, but it's tough. I, I understand, and maybe it's a question for Robin, that you do have the purview to reduce the front setback, but that's a separate request at the time of elevation approval.
A conceptual site plan, and that's that landscape buffer on major roads? It can be reduced down, it's sixty on this, it's sixty on this, um, major arterial. However, this body has the ability during the conceptual site plan review process to reduce that down to forty with it, but what they have to do is they have to plant twenty percent more trees on the property.
Makes sense. Perfect, those are all my questions, thank you.
And if, uh, thank you, sir, if it, if it, if the five feet makes a big difference to you, we can do that, but we have to make it up on the front side.
Understood.
Commissioner, read now.
Sure. A question to staff to start. This is not, or is this part of any type of overlay on 54 in this area?
This is not within an overlay.
I didn't think. Looking ahead as to the proposed revitalization of the whole Governor's Walk area, as, as we have discussed and, um, done some of the stuff on in the past, is there anything in the future that we're looking at to place an overlay like we have over on the western side of 54, on the eastern side of 54?
So, um, would, on the western side, we have architectural design guidelines that are above and beyond the city's guidelines. Um, that has been discussed by council, but it's not currently funded.
Okay. I, I guess that leads me into, to the question, um, again, for staff. When we look at this from, from that standpoint, um, you know, we had the new auto parts store come in, um, you know, kind of, we go back to our style and character. Um, and I would say it probably closely, or closer, matches the public shopping center, um, at least in, in colors and styles and things such as that. Looking at the other developments that are currently there, and I guess this kind of ties in with the new paint scheme of Governor's Walk, in addition to the new paint scheme of West Park Walk.
Which will be on your next agenda.
Okay. Uh, and that kind of goes into the overlay of, of what, what that's gonna look like. Do we have anything, I guess we could put restrictions on, um, to say that, hey, you know, this needs to be in a, a style and color of, of what we have, since there is nothing, is that correct? Or not?
Right, so, um, the city council has the ability to add conditions on rezoning, which can include architectural requirements, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, and I guess one other question to, to staff, and then I'll, I'll ask it to the applicant. Um, census is considered right now office. We have the Juicery, uh, that went in, who was over at Governor's Walk, who moved across the street. Um, how was that incorporated into it?
The city has, and I'll tell you, when I first got here seventy years ago, um, this kind of blew my mind. The city has a, in an office zoning district, um, sit-down restaurants, smaller than six thousand square feet, with no drive-through, are a permitted use in the OI zoning district. So that's why it's there.
I was wondering how exactly, I figured there had to be some, something in the, the zoning for that. Um, and, and I know this is a, a small, very small parcel. Um, if somebody was able to, I hate to say shoehorn, shoehorn an office building, um, it could go two stories, just like the Piedmont facility, just almost adjacent to it, is that correct? If they were able to do something like that.
So what I will say is, in theory, yes. But what we're seeing with office uses, particularly, we're, the only office use that seems to be growing is medical.
Right.
And the parking requirements for medical just far exceed what our minimum standards are. And so, if somebody were to come in and try to put in, or want to put in a two-story, they're- their ability to get parking would be very limited. They might have to go to a deck situation, which, you know, doubles, we're looking at $60,000 to $70,000 per parking spot for that.
Okay. I was just trying to level set that, that, you know, something could go in there, if it was possible to do it under the current.
Yep.
And I guess that ties in. Really, from the question to the applicant, you know, I looked at the different facilities that you have, you know, very kind of standard design, kind of standard color scheme, you know, if there would be an approval for this going down the road, would there be any consideration to changing, to closer match, and I'm not taking the Governor's Walk into consideration right now, but to closer match some of the style and character of the other buildings that are not only the public shopping center, but getting over into Lexington, also with kind of the earth tones and things such as that. I know there's a couple exceptions in there, the dentist office and things like that, but would there be any consideration to come in and change things a little bit? And we've made those requests in the past, I think Guthrie's, you know, they changed their design to better match, you know, the layout and how really the traffic flow kind of needed to be. Would that be something that the ownership team would consider, or is it basically, this is the design, this is the color, and this is the way it's going to be?
No, so I'm actually really glad you brought that up. The massing and the elevations for the building that we presented, this is a foamworks ground up building, so we have a lot of latitude to do a lot of things. But what we've done in a lot of jurisdictions is just that, is match what the desire for the overall streetscape is. And so we have looked really hard and tried very hard to have that dialogue, and to make sure that, you know, it fits from an architectural standpoint.
Okay. I think that's everything at this time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
So just one question for staff. I know you mentioned the two points, that if it would be permitted, you mentioned the no vehicular access to Sumner Road, you mean, so they would not be allowed to have access, right?
That's right.
So there'd be no cut through?
Exactly. That's what we would look for, is so that their traffic is coming in and off of 54, and not using Sumner.
Okay. And then for the applicant, what are the operating hours, since that did come up? What will they be?
Generally, eight to eight.
Every day?
Correct.[781.19][781.19](LAUGHING).
Okay. And then just one more question for you, just based on, you know, what we've heard, and maybe I'm just wanting to know if you guys have done any, like, research, with having several other car washes of this type, have you done any, like, just demographics, and, you know, just to kind of predict how well you think this?
Yeah.
Will do in this location, in this city, along with a lot of competition, that type thing?
Absolutely. So internally, we do, well, internally FoamWorks does, pro formas on every single site. What this makes, what makes this site interesting is, and as you heard one of the folks speaking in favor mention, is there's no car wash in this area of the city. You have one on the other side of 54 that's hard to get to, and then you've got one at the southern part of the city. So there's really a need for this. We've done, we've done traffic counts as well, and are very confident in the viability of this store. You know, we've grown substantially over the past couple of years, and all of our locations have been extremely successful. One other thing to point out, in terms of volume and traffic, is a lot of car washes, number one, with staff's condition, which we've consented to, and then imposed a height and standard on top, with the no access on Sumner, plus the planted evergreen buffer. A lot of car washes in our traffic study, our traffic trip generation memorandum, which is in your materials for this evening, says that a fair amount of traffic for a car wash is passersby. And above and beyond that, even more of those are folks that live in the area. Car washes are not destinations, right? They are, oh, there's one down the street, let me go, or, oh, I'm going to stop by on my way home. And another important thing to note is that FoamWorks, based on its locations, not only in Fayette County, but in the surrounding areas and other areas that we're prospecting, that's the goal, is to have a membership program where, if you're riding through another jurisdiction, and you see your brand of auto spa, you can stop in. Or if you're heading home, you can see your brand of auto spa and swing by. So again, it's not a traffic generator, it's more of a traffic puller, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So I have a couple of questions for the staff. I know I've been on the commission maybe about a year or so now. It seems as though we recently approved a car wash. Where was that car wash actually located? Do you recall?
The most recent car wash was on property already zoned GC, at the intersection of Huddleston and 54 West.
Okay. And do you mind pulling up the map again?
We'll switch over PowerPoint.
Okay.
Is this helpful?
Yes. And can you generally show me where Huddleston is?
Oh, okay. So we are up here, and then you go down 54 towards Coweta County. You're going to cross through the intersection of 5474, and it's the second traffic signal on the left. It's in this area right here, and it sort of serves the, you know, it's one of the main roads in the industrial park.
Okay. Okay, I think I recall that now.
Okay.
The other question I had is, it sounds as though we have about 14 or so car washes in Peachtree City now, is that an accurate number?
Well, so, I haven't done, like, a Google search, but for physical bricks and mortar car washes, we have two, like, that are this auto wash. And then we've got one on the north, so the two are, as we mentioned, this is sort of, I think it's called Caliber, and then on 74 going south, near the police station is Riptide, and then 74 North, near the Target, is a, an older model that, or, it does have some drive through, but it's mostly kind of a do it yourself, I think it's called the Bubble, or something like that. So those are brick and mortar locations in Peachtree City. Then there are detail stores that, I only know two, and that's just because my daughter spelled a Starbucks in my car, and I Googled it last weekend, and there is one across the street here, and then there's one in the industrial district. But I don't want to give the impression that I know everything about the detailed, detailed locations.
Okay. And I'm just curious, you may or may not know, of the car wash type facilities that we actually have here, do we know, or is there any statistics as far as, you know, a traffic count, or the number of cars that go through the car wash per day, per hour?
We could call and ask for that information. It's probably not something that they would, I don't know if they'd want it to be published, but the International Institute of Traffic Engineers, they create these kind of traffic counts, which is what that memo that was attached are based on. Those are sort of national counts that are taken over decades to try to create these, try to figure out how many trips are created by the use versus how many are captured by pass by, as he mentioned. But the city doesn't have any kind of research like that.
Thank you, Robin. So I did have one or two questions for the applicant. One of the things I think I heard you say is that you provide a decent pay, I think is basically what you said. Do you mind telling us how much per hour you pay your employees?
Yes, so, Blinka, if you want to talk, this is the operations guy.
Yeah, talk about the site leaders too. So our site leaders generally start off at $20 an hour, but they are based off of the profit of the store. So what that means is, you'll see locations that can make anywhere from $80,000, really there's no cap, so they could technically make anywhere from, like, $80,000 to $200,000 if they wanted to. It all depends on the success of the site, which is basically community approval, which is something we always look for. Your regular tenant, they start off at $10 an hour, plus commission. So generally, commission, they're going to make anywhere from $2 to $5 per sale. So there's possibilities of making anywhere from 300, I have people that make consistently a thousand dollars a month just off that, separate from their actual base pay. But they do increase up to $12 an hour within a year. So, and we generally do want to hire a lot of attendants. And then our team leads start off at 12, go anywhere up to 13 or 14, and then we generally provide, depending on the success of the store, they'll always have an assistant, sometimes they may have two if the store needs it, which in a location like this, based off car counts and how things, if things went well, then they probably would. And they're starting off anywhere from $15 to $17 an hour, plus the ability to make commission, just like everyone else.
Okay. I think one of the things I heard you say is that your hours of operation is from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
That is correct.
During that time span, how many site leaders do you have at the facility? And what kind of hours are they working? Is there a site leader always there?
Yes and no. No, so the site leader and the assistants share this role. So the site leaders, they're probably, you know, they're, they have a minimum hour requirement of 45 hours, just to ensure site is meeting standards. And assistants, they don't have a cap or a minimum requirement, but generally, they'll work whenever the site leader is not there. That way, we can ensure the site leader, or the site is maintained like it's supposed to. So we always have a management team there, that is our, that is our standards.
Okay, perfect. And on Sundays, are your hours still the same?
Our hours are still the same, yes.
Okay. So one of the things that's always interesting to me is, to capture your point, is the market analysis that you actually do before you decide to site somewhere. It sounds as though there's about 14 other car washes around, or you have some competition. I'm curious to know, what makes you different? And if you actually have some numbers that you projected, as far as how many cars you're expecting to come through your car wash per hour on various days, when can we expect to see the most traffic flow, Monday, or Friday, or Saturday? How does that actually work?
So I'll handle the issue about other locations and other types of car washes, and then Jason can talk about the operations. So in terms of other car washes, there, the market has got a variety, right? You've got a hand wash, which is a full detail, spending $80 plus, right? Then you've got the do it yourself, where you put quarters in, and this is the older style, this guy you referenced, where you've got the wand, and you're, you know, feeding quarters into it and washing it. And then you've got the full automatic, with your drive through, not like the ones attached to a gas station, one like FoamWorks, with high end machinery, the full tunnel, the full pull through, with high chemicals. With those, there's only two others, right? There is the Caliber, and then the Riptide, just down here, leaving virtually the entire east side unserved. So that's the market analysis that pushed us here. There is nothing comparable to our service in this portion of the corridor. And not to degrade a competitor location, but the other 54 location, it has operational constraints in terms of its location, its access, it doesn't have a direct access on the 54. It's like, how would you describe it? Behind?
It's behind other stuff. I mean, it's really hard to get in and out, just being honest. I, so I live in Coweta County, so I know this area very well. I mean, I grew up here since I was one years old, and we shopped in Peachtree City. This was where we came. I lived literally five, 10 minutes down the street in Coweta County. Title Wave was the first one that came up, where like, oh, hey, this is a viable option, but it's also not in Peachtree City. So the only people you're capturing are the people that are coming from Coweta County to Peachtree City, or people going from Peachtree City, Coweta County. In terms of people coming from Fayetteville, there is no wash they are going to, except for the other Title Wave, which again, is technically in Shartburg, not in Peachtree City. And the only reason why I know that is because I actually worked for Title Wave, and I ran a location in Fayetteville. So I dealt with a lot of customers from the Peachtree City area. And that was a very common understanding, is, yes, we had some, but it wasn't a lot. In terms of the Ricks, Riptide, sorry, yeah, we've looked at the location, it's just a really hard in and out, and generally, that's constrained to that market area, which is mainly, you know, businesses, industrial area, that sound like people going in and out of town to go shop or go home. And we've talked with the owner, because that was something that we had considered, is not put a wash over here, and actually make that wash better, if we could. And it just wasn't a viable option for either or, and so that's why we looked at this location. It's just because, for the community, we felt this was the best option to serve everyone.
So I would imagine on the weekend is when you expect the most customers to come through?
Generally, and it's not, it's a timeframe. So for us, for me, as a operations person, I look at hour times, not just days. So yes, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays can generally be the busiest days, but I actually have always found Mondays were busier than my Sundays, and it's because your community goes to church, your community watches football, your communities, I mean, there's just so many things people are doing on Sundays, spending time with their family and whatnot. So the last thing they always think about is a car wash. So we don't see high volumes until at least after 12 o'clock on a Sunday. And that's when people are going to lunch, so they're out, they're finishing some shopping and stuff like that. And we slow down, I would say generally between 6:00 and 7:00 PM. I mean, I have a, the wash that I actually ran for FoamWorks in Fayetteville, we were notorious for slowing down at 7:00. We stayed open just for those members that were out late at night. They had nighttime jobs, so they were going to work, or they had a late shift, so they were coming home, so we were there for them. So it wasn't like we were, we weren't technically, we didn't have high decibel levels, because we were keeping our vacuums on all the time. We would shut down certain parts of the areas, that way, we can reduce the volume at night, or at least reduce the noise at night. Now Fridays and Saturdays, it's a hit or miss. Mornings can, it all depends on the area, that's the big thing. I don't know how busy Publix is in the morning, but if it was busy in the morning, that means we could be busy in the morning. If that was not the case, then it could fluctuate. I would honestly, without a doubt, looking at this and knowing the car counts, I would say we're not going to impede traffic, or make traffic worse, only because I know how, as someone that does go home through Peachtree City, I don't want to stop when I'm, you know, sitting in traffic for 15, 20 minutes trying to get home, to get through Peachtree City. So I don't think that's going to be an issue, and if anything, we would help that, because those people are like, okay, let me get off the road, let me wash my car for five to 10 minutes and let that traffic go down. At least that's what I've seen in the past.
Sure. The last question I had concerned the noise. I imagine you can have noise from two places. If your car wash actually plays music, number one, and number two, also the equipment that you have.
And the first one is actually not permitted. The GC zoning district says no speaker, loudspeaker systems are permitted.
Perfect.
And as a, as a brand, we don't play music. And then in terms of noise from the mechanical operations?
Right.
With the vacuums, we have those in vacuum enclosures, in locations where we're in proximity where that could be an issue. So those, I mean, it's an enclosure that creates, so it's like putting your home vacuum cleaner in the closet and shutting the door, right?
Do you have any decibel numbers associated with those?
Yes, yes, Commissioner. We've looked at those on prior, and once inside, it reduces, when you're standing next to it, the volume to a normal conversation level. So it'd be like, if I wasn't at the microphone, and you're never talking.
Thank you.
So, as usual, my commissioners have done a great job in asking questions. So I have just a couple, and I'm going to build on the last question Commissioner Reeves just asked about the noise, because I'm concerned with respect to the folks who live behind there. And you can, you know, you can say it's not that loud, but if you live it right behind there, it's too late to say, well, it's not that loud. I'm concerned about the noise barrier, the noise, and would ask you this question, would you be willing to develop a noise barrier of some sort for that site?
Yeah, I don't know that we can put up...
Yeah, I don't know that we can put up like a wall, like you see on the interstate, but what we found works in the past are the three things that we proposed. The double staggered row of evergreens, trees year-round, because they do not, because they are evergreen, act as a natural barrier. You add the fence, and then you add the vacuum enclosures, and that has proven to be quite effective across a variety of sites.
Okay, it's, I mean, so it sounds good to me, but again, I, you know, I, I, you know, I, if I'm a neighbor, you know, I don't wanna hear the noise of, 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 of the cars, and so, you know, I'm some concerned about that. I just, I heard what you said, and that's fine, uh, I, I'm just concerned about that. And I really do believe that they have a right to not have, you know, that, that, you know, noise really just, you know, right, right upon them. So I'll just leave it at that with respect to the question, cuz you-
Mr. Chairman, may I add one thing?
Sure, go right ahead.
So we had, we had a lot of these discussions in a couple of other zonings, and one of the things that we were able to look at when we looked at the noise suppressors around the vacuum producers was, we measured the am- we knew what the ambient noise was of the roadway, very similar to the main road sitting in front of this. And with the suppressors and with the way the tunnel's designed to push the noise back inside toward the equipment, so in other words, it bounces it back to the equipment, the two combined, the noise levels were lower than the actual road noise that's already there.
Hmm.
And while I haven't stood out front of this site, or we haven't done any decibel levels, I can guarantee you just by the traffic counts that that's probably gonna be the case here.
So let me ask staff, um, in hearing what they, they have said, do you have any experience that would lead you to believe that my concerns about the noise barrier would be addressed by that, that, that they? And I'm asking to do, you know, to, I'm just asking, do you have any experience with, with their proposing? If that, if that's something that you know that might really alleviate the, the fear of, of, of noise for the neighbors?
Um, you know, we just, we don't have car washes, uh, facilities that close to residential areas and the other parts of the city. So, um, so I, I don't have this direct experience. There are, um, I mean, as he mentioned, we have a noise ordinance in the city.
Right.
So it, they cannot produce over that, that decibel level um from a commercial site anyway. And um, and then there are also, like, the landscaping, different kinds of landscaping actually uh bounce noise better than some other kinds, types of plants, so we could look at doing those kinds of things too.
Okay, thank you. And the last question I have really has to do with, I know it's called Foamworks, but where's this water gonna roll? Where's it gonna go?
Mr. Chairman, I've got one comment on the noise to the brand of enclosure and uh vacuums we use. So it's certified at a decibel level, start with uh the proprietary noise system at seventy-four decibels, which is traffic on a normal day runs between seventy-five and eighty-five decibels standing right off the roadway. So to Mr. Bodker's point, it is commensurate with roadway traffic.
All right, thank you. So again, so the last question I had had to do with um the water runoff, um, you know, I know it's called Foamworks, but where, where's the water going?
Oh, it's a hundred percent, it's, like I says, uh, we, we strive for like a hundred to ninety percent water reclamation, which is tanks underneath the building. So it goes back in, it goes through a treatment system, and then it all goes back into the wash.
Hmm.
Yeah, so there's a, actually, you probably never notice when you're going to wash, but if you, when you're driving onto this track, if you look directly below your car where you're driving, you're actually gonna see grates. And that is actually what they call a pit, it's an enclosure. Um, and there are grease traps essentially, which you see at restaurants, located somewhere on the outside of the building. They are just holding tanks for this recycled water, and it is constantly going through its own filtration, and it goes through osmosis as well. So a lot of concerns I always hear is, what about the smell of recycled water? And I do understand that. Well, the system we use is called so right, and what it does is it actually uses UV lights to basically eh, UV lights and osmosis to get rid of the smell. So there's absolutely none. You can go probably to any of these other washes down the streets, and I guarantee you, they have them, um, just because I know for sure they have them actually. And do you not smell the recycled water?
Well, I'm glad you addressed that, because the car wash that Commissioner Reeves was referencing, um, I know at um Huddleston, that was a problem there. Um, and, 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 and I think they've addressed it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, there was a, that's, you, shortly thereafter, you saw the sewer repair groups coming out there. Um, that was, there was an issue with the system around it, not that site.
Got you. All right, let's move on then.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Yeah, I actually have, have two, if that's okay.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Um, first question, I'm gonna address the staff. Um, is there still anything going on with commercial development? Um, the Bradshaw development of, of Sumner and fifty-four, is that still in, in play?
Planning Commission?
I don't know, I haven't heard anything from them.
Okay.
I know it's been on our list.
We've got an initial submission from them, um, but I think we had some comments, so it's not quite ready for um your, you know, to bring to you yet. But yes, they are actively working on that site.
Okay, so that is still in, in play on the other side of, of that area?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, question to the applicant, looking at your current locations that you have, and, and nothing, of course, that, that I'm seeing is anything proposed, but everything that's current, um, the only location I, I really see that I would say is in close proximity to residential area is the one in Riverdale. Um, and that in itself is across a, well, almost something more like fifty-four um from where it is going into residential community. Do you have any other locations that are in such a close proximity to a residential area, say fifty feet, a hundred feet?
Yeah, we, uh, Stockbridge is one.
Yeah, Stockbridge, we have, uh, I mean, there's a um-
Apartment complex?
Apartment complex right behind it.
And also in Alpharetta, we have a new location which is under constr- well, it's actually a retrofit. Uh, and uh, Commissioner Member, that was one that we tailored the look of the building to fit what the local community wanted. That location is directly on the outside of a residential neighborhood, so you drive past it to go into a residential subdivision.
Okay, yeah, cuz the only one I really saw that was close, and I, I do see the one in Stockbridge, and it may be close to apartments, but it's, it's within a pretty heavily commercial area right there. Uh, so that's what I was curious, if you had any of the locations, either current or proposed, that would be in, in a similar proximity to, to what you're proposing?
Yeah, so we've got an old Milton Parkway in Alpharetta, directly behind, and that's a state route. So there is an existing wash there, and directly behind that is a single-family subdivision.
Okay, thank you. That's everything, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, thank you. So now we're gonna move into comments by commissioners, um, and then we'll have a vote. And let's start with Commissioner Hamner, comments?
Sure, yeah, several. Um, first of all, let me just say, thank you for coming out. Um, personally speaking, I really like your business. Foamworks seems to be really great in terms of a car wash and in general, you know, we support businesses coming into Peachtree City. But having said that, you know, looking, we have to look at this from a zoning request. And when I think of it as a zoning request, I actually have three major concerns that are gonna uh make me vote no for this. First one, as uh, uh, Mrs. Kai you noted earlier, um, you know, she said, it was staff's opinion that this did not fit the village concept. Um, I agree with that, because again, there should be step-down on this. It does butt up against a residential forty-three zoning. Uh, and when the annexation did occur several years ago, that was taken into consideration in terms of this is supposed to be zoned this way. Point number two is, um, you know, when we look at zoning, uh, we have to think about the points that are currently within our zoning, zoning ordinance. And uh, there's a point, Article thirteen oh four, uh, for evaluation consideration when requests like this are made. One of the points is quote, whether the zoning proposal will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property. Again, it's against the low-density residential property over there. And there is precedence within this area that we should take into consideration as well. In September of twenty twenty, uh, there was a zoning request for general commercial from uh that butted up against a residential area. It was actually supposed to be a Popeyes. Um, and when we took a look at that proposal, uh, same consideration came up, is that, you know, we had to think about the way that, that zoning and the way that zoning would be used would impact uh the additional properties around that. And that was residential uh on that. Um, so there is precedence in terms of us saying that, you know, for commercial within this area, you know, we have to take the, 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 the local residents into consideration from that perspective that live in that zoning. And then my third and final point on this is that, as uh Scott mentioned earlier, you know, there are businesses that are making the, the zoning work right now. Uh, Latonic Juicery is right next door to this. Uh, it's really nice facility, it's, it's actually a really amazing property with the backyard and things like that. That has been, uh, again, obviously, a, a business that's brought in jobs, helped the community as well, and has also worked really well with the uh, the adjoining zoning on that. So again, uh, just to wrap up, Foamworks, I think is really, I think is great. I think it could be a really nice addition to Peachtree City. I have issues, again, through those three issues with the uh, the property that's being considered for it right now and the zoning requests associated with it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Rittenhour.
Sure, and Commissioner Hamner, thank you for the, the zoning, cuz that's one of the items I was gonna go. Um, you know, looking at, looking at requests like this coming in, you know, one of the things that, um, you know, it's really not within our, our bounds is, is truly looking at, at the business case. That is, that is up to the business, um, and whether or not your vo- your business is viable or, or not. Um, you know, one of the things that, my goodness, since I've been here now since twenty thirteen, uh, we've gone from two car washes, basically. Um, if, if I remember correctly, the one off Across Town in, in fifty-four, or Across Town in seventy-four, and the, uh, and the bubble over there kinda by, by Target that has been there for quite a while. And I, I forgot about the, the one off of, um, off of fifty-four, right there at the BP station, Amaco, where they had to drive in and, and wash yourself. So, uh, you know, we've gone from, from basically maybe one major one where you could actually go into and, and drive-through, um, to now we, we have the Riptide, uh, we have Caliber, uh, this is being proposed. We have the current ones, um, where you can go ahead and wash your own. In addition to, you know, there's one apparently, a take five, that's gonna be going into Tyrone at, at some point in time. Uh, so, you know, we always, I always look at it as that I hope you've done due diligence um in, in your business case. Um, if, that being said, really, my, my concerns are, again, the close proximity to, to the residential area. Um, hence my, my question is, I took a look at, at really some, some maps as to where your other locations that you currently have are at. Um, most of them are in very commercialized areas, uh, and rightly so. Um, and I know you mentioned about the one in Alpharetta, uh, the one in Stockbridge, again, you know, it's, it's a very commercial area where, where there's apartments. I would liken that very, almost similar to what's going on in Fayetteville, um, off of, off of eighty-five, uh, where you see all the apartment developments and everything, and all the commercial in front across from Lowe's and some different areas there. Um, and that's where I would see that. So a lot of my concern is that, you know, we're, we're trying to put something in an area where even though it may not be a bad, you know, business, it, it, I'm sure it's a good business, it's, it's not in a good location. And exactly what Commissioner Hamner said before, you know, we had a similar request, you know, several years ago, exactly the Popeyes going in off of Robinson Road. Um, and that not only would have created, of, of course, a nightmare from a traffic standpoint, and I think we see that with what's going on with, um, the new, you know, middle school that's there, um, but also the severe impact on those single-family homes, um, that have been there for, for quite a long time, um, and the residents there. Uh, so, you know, I, I have a lot of problems with, number one, you know, rezoning something um for a, a parcel that can be used in its, in its current zoning. Um, it may not be an easy parcel to do, but it is zoned, um, and I'm sure there's some, some options out there for some things. Um, and then really going and the impact on the residents. Uh, we could put up sound barriers, we can put up different things. I mean, I've found in the past that sometimes sound barriers actually amplify the sound, because it doesn't do what it's supposed to do. Um, from a traffic standpoint, I'm not as concerned with that, because there's no access to Sumner. Um, you know, we're gonna keep everything on fifty-four, and if there was a, a office building that could be built there, it would be the same amount, if not more, traffic going in there. So that's not a real issue for me from that standpoint. But really, the impact on the other, um, on the other properties in, in the, in the surrounding area, as well as rezoning it, that has that impact. So, um, that's really my thoughts, thank you.
Commissioner Johnston.
Uh, so again, thank you, thank you for everything you've presented, answering our questions. Um, I agree, it is a great concept, I do like it. And the first thing I thought is, oh wow, there, there isn't one on that side of town, because I kinda live right in the middle of the city. So I do agree with that. Um, my biggest concern also is the proximity to residential. I mean, people move here to live, so, I mean, that's, that's what, you know, we spend more time in our homes, hopefully. Um, so people move here to live here. It is great to have convenience to all the businesses and things that we need every day, you know, shopping and everything we need. But I think the main thing is people do move to Peachtree City for the city and to live here. So I do, my biggest concern is just the proximity to, to residential.
Thank you, and Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, thank you. Um, the beauty of you going to your right first is that by the time you get to me, most things that I've considered saying are already said, so I'm not gonna belabor the point. But I do consider the application quite problematic, uh, for lots of the reasons that staff has already addressed. Um, I think as planning commissioners, it's very important that when we see applications like this, that we take into account, uh, a lot of what the public has to say. And I think the public did a, a very good job to articulate their concerns, uh, which I do agree, you know. Um, there is a noise concern, there's a big difference between a seventy-five decibel and a eighty-five decibel. Um, I also, um, think that the type of traffic that we get at Publix um could not be the same as the traffic that we get, um, at a car wash, and we not have traffic problems, especially on a Saturday. Um, so I, I do think the application is quite problematic, and my primary concern is the noise, as well as the decrease in green spaces for that property. Thank you.
Sure. So Commissioner Reeves, the downside of going last is you're absolutely right, whether I go left or right, most of you have already are gonna say, have said what I was gonna say. So at the risk of redundancy, I won't take very much time. I think it is, um, a, a noteworthy project, a very good project, but I have similar concerns as other commissioners, um, whether it's the, the impact on the residents. Uh, but I'm also a really big stickler for believing in following our comprehensive plan. And, and this, um, doesn't follow our comprehensive plan, and I believe that the comprehensive plan is the guide that we should follow, um, for development. And, um, and, 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 you know, in this case, we, you know, we're talking about stepping down them, you know, there's a little model that shows that the step down from high, most, the most active to the, to, 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 to the least. And, and this just doesn't follow, uh, it doesn't follow what we have called for in our comprehensive plan. And, and I'm just, I just believe if you put a plan together that talks about what the city ought to be doing, you need to follow that. Um, and there may be some exceptions from time to time, but you have to stick mostly to, to that plan. Um, otherwise, uh, the city really has no direction about what it, what it does relative to development. So, um, that's my biggest concern, is that it doesn't really follow the comprehensive plan that we have in place. So with that, I'll stop, and now, uh, commissioners, I will, um, ask for, um, a motion on agenda item P H two-three dash zero-six, the rezoning of two zero one one and one nine nine nine, Highway fifty-four west from O I Office Institution to G C General Commercial. Is there a motion?
I'll motion. Mr. Chairman, I've, uh, motioned that we reject the proposal as in detailed new agenda item twenty-three dash zero-nine dash zero-one. Uh, oh, excuse me, P, uh, P H dash twenty-three dash zero-six, the rezone of, uh, two zero one one and one nine nine nine, Highway fifty-four west from O I Office Institutional to G C General Commercial.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Then all of them, if they've been signified by saying aye? Aye. Any opposes? And the motion, uh, is defeated for five, five to zero. All right, uh, thank you. We'll move on now to item number six. Uh, there is no order, order agenda items, we'll move to item number seven, new agenda items. Uh, we'll start with item two-three dash zero-nine dash zero-one, building elevations for Chick-fil-A at one-two-two-two, Highway seventy-four south. And we're turning over to staff for the presentation.
All right. So let's talk about Chick-fil-A. The location for this Chick-fil-A that we're going to talk about, it's at the south end of town, down here in the Will Sharp Pavilion Shopping Center at the intersection of Highway 74 South and Holly Grove Road. And the property is zoned general commercial. And there's a lot going on here. Sorry about that. So, the Chick-fil-A is going to be doing a kitchen renovation that will result in a minor building expansion that will affect the rear of the building and the west side of the building. And didn't show up as well as I hoped, but there's a little gray area here in the back and down the side of the building right here, if you can sort of see it in the site plan. And this is a elevation of the rear of the building, the proposal. And here's a picture of the way it looks currently. And then this is the side of the building that will be revised up to this point, right here. And here's a picture of how it looks today. As part of the renovation, they're also proposing to update the building colors throughout the building to the current standard Chick-fil-A color palette, which is shown here across the bottom. These colors are neutral, which is very similar to the existing colors, but they are darker. The brick will remain, and new brick where replacement is required due to the expansion, will match the existing brick. And all the brick in the shopping center is the same color. You don't see as much brick on this building as we typically require for structures along Highway 74 because it was originally approved just prior to the adoption of our current architectural requirements. Just a side note there. For a color comparison to the rest of the shopping center, these are two pictures, one of the Publix area, and then some of the other retailers there. And these two photographs here, and you can see the colors are a little bit lighter, as well as, it looks like even some of the colors on the Chick-fil-A are even lighter than that. So while the proposed colors are not quite the same as those from the Will Sharp Pavilion Design Guidelines, from the color palette, from those design guidelines, they're basically in the same neutral color family. And so staff believes that the proposed colors blend well with the existing buildings and also the natural environment. And they'll remain consistent with the development scheme for the shopping center, and therefore, we recommend approval of these, of that proposed elevations.
All right. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Please come to the mic and give us your name and who you represent. And then if you want to add something to the presentation, that's fine.
Yeah. My name's Jason Tool with CPH. We're the architect and engineer for Chick-fil-A. Don't really have much to add. I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think, as staff put it, like she said, we are going to be repainting the stucco part of the building. It'll just be a little bit darker than what it is now. But like she said, it kind of blends in with what's already out there for the rest of the shopping center. But I'm here to have, and happy to answer any questions, but really not more to add to that.
Okay. Very good. And you said Tool was your last name?
Yes, sir. Jason Tool.
Okay, very good. All right. Let's start with Commissioner Reeves. Any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Johnston.
Just one question. By expanding the rear of the building, what are, what's being lost back there then by having to expand? Like, what's changing in the rear?
So there's a service yard there currently. So basically, that would go away, and there'll be a building addition put on that side, and then like they said, on the west side of the building as well. So really, you're losing what was some pavement area there before. But the reason for the addition is in order to streamline the kitchen. So you get more freezer space in the back, and then also more kitchen space. It actually reduces seating inside the building slightly. But you do, like I said, you get a larger kitchen just to kind of streamline. The best way to explain it is, right now, employees have to walk from side to side as they're doing different tasks. This will make everything in line.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rittenhour.
And I guess a question for staff. This ties in, of course, to the next item.
Yes, it does.
The landscape. And there's a little more information. So the building expansion, well, I shouldn't say it. The drive-through lanes were granted already in a variance earlier this year, correct? The way that was set up?
Yes. But there's nothing about the building, the curb line around the building is not changing.
Okay.
So while the building footprint is expanding a bit, it's not changing the curb line that's around the building.
So it's just going to be taking more of the space?
It's just taking more of the space that is currently around the building.
Okay. Because I know in the next item, we're losing some, many of your feet of landscaping because of the dual lanes.
Correct. Yes.
So, okay.
That's correct.
Okay. That's, that was everything. Clarification. Thank you.
Commissioner Hamner?
No questions.
And I have no questions as well. So we'll turn to comments. And Commissioner Hamner, we'll start with you. Any comments?
No comments.
Commissioner Rittenhour?
No comments.
Commissioner Johnston?
I'm just excited that, hopefully, due to this kitchen expansion, it will help with the drive-through traffic there.
Commissioner Reeves?
No comments.
And I'm laughing because I go to Chick-fil-A a lot, and I agree with Commissioner Johnston. I hope it improves it as well. But I don't really have any other comments. So the chair will entertain a motion for item number 23-09-01, the building elevations for Chick-fil-A at 1222 Highway 74 South.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the building elevations for the Chick-fil-A at 1222 Highway 74 South, item number 23-09-01, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The ayes have it. I will move on to item 23-09-02, the landscape plan for Chick-fil-A at 1222 Highway 74 South. Staff, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So continuing with the renovations at the Chick-fil-A on the south side of town in the Will Sharp Pavilion Shopping Center, they will also be widening the driveway to accommodate the continuation of the dual-lane drive-through around the building to improve traffic flow. As you might be familiar, right now, there's, the dual-drive-through lane is only right here on this, on this west side of the building. And then you narrow down into the one lane as you continue around the building. And you have to, you know, you've got the bypass lane to come by the people waiting to get their food, and then you jump in front of them to get in that lane. And what they want to do is expand that so you can continue two lanes on around the building. Well, you'll see that in the next slide, but right, actually, you can see it here. So it'll be this lane will continue on around. So you'll have that lane and this lane, and then this is the bypass lane, and the parking will be, see, here's the new curb line for the parking. So this is the old parking. It gets shifted out to here, and here, and here. Down here is the new curb line. So this slide here is to show you what, what is being removed. And again, in order to achieve this, they were granted a variance in May of this year to, for a buffer reduction along both Highway 74 and Holly Grove Road. And a stipulation of that variance was to submit a new landscape plan for you all to review and approve. The existing trees that will be removed are, down here along 74, there's four tall pine trees. And over here, there's a tree in the parking lot. It's listed as unknown, so we don't know what type tree that is. And for whatever reason, there's three crepe myrtles here next to the building that they will be replacing with some new crepe myrtles. So all of these, see, over here, there are several crepe myrtles sort of right along the edge of the property. Those will all remain in place. And now I forget what these are. They might also be crepe myrtles, but trees right along the edge of the property also will remain. So only five trees to be removed, and those crepe myrtles to be replaced. So let's look at all the beautiful plants that we're going to get as part of the new plan. The new plan includes planting in the buffer areas, as well as in the parking lot, and also around the building. The buffer along 74 will be supplemented with three new overstory trees and four understory trees. We've got some scarlet oaks being proposed. Those are these, these larger circles, these green ones right here. And then these out front are, let's see, those are the dogwoods. And this purple one is a red bud. So we've got some nice fall color with the scarlet oaks. We've got some blooming dogwoods and a red bud, and some pretty spring color going on there. And then there's a lovely row of azaleas all along this. As you may know, if you've been there, there's a retaining wall here. That retaining wall will get pushed out. So there's, you don't see it from Highway 74. You'll really only see it from down in the parking area here. But out in front, there's a lovely row of these azaleas right here. Now, that's an evergreen plant, and they'll be beautiful in the spring. Then this, along Holly Grove Road here, you know, we have a landscape requirement for a screen, a 24-inch screen to be planted along in front of the parking row, and that will be some dwarf burford hollies. So it's an evergreen shrub. Then we have, oh, also out front, I forgot to mention, proposing some flowering plants around the monument sign out front. Let's see. And we have a new, we have some new parking lot trees where there were none to begin with. We got one here, 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 and here. See, some zelkova's and a cherry tree, and then as well as plenty of new shrubs and ground covers. And then around the building as well, shrubs and ground covers. And as I mentioned, those three new crepe myrtles to replace these, and some, and two Japanese, two Japanese maples in here. So that'll be really nice to look at while you're waiting in your drive-through line, although hopefully you aren't waiting too long, because now that we have dual lanes, things will go much faster. But this is just an example of all the blooming shrubs that they're planting. There's four different kinds of azaleas, a camellia, some abelia, lots of pretty, lots of pretty color. So anyway, while there's five trees and some shrubs being removed for the site improvements, there's 14 new trees and a variety of flowering shrubs and ground covers are being proposed, and just an abundance of new color and texture being added to the property. Staff is of the opinion that the proposed landscape plan for Chick-fil-A meets the variance requirements and recommends approval.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Tool, anything to add to that presentation?
Yeah, I do have one thing I wanted to clarify. And are you Laura?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You should have received the revised landscape plan. The only difference that is from this, as part of the coordination with staff on the engineering review for some of the stormwater requirements, can you go back to the tree removal plan?
Yes.
So, I'll look at mine, because I can see, 1043, which is the tree on the very top-left corner, to your right a little bit, a little bit more, and straight up, right there. So there is a, you can see the stormwater pipe, that gray line that runs underneath that. As part of coordination with staff for the engineering review, we're going to be putting in a water quality unit right there, which that water quality unit is, it's not a very large unit, but it's probably a 10-by-10 box, but it's all underground. But because of that, we're going to need to remove that tree, and a new tree will be coming down just kind of to the left of where your cursor is now.
Over here.
Right in that space there.
Okay.
Other than that, everything is the same. I actually have a copy of it, if you need to see it. But it should have been, it was, should have been submitted as well, the last amendment we made.
I didn't realize it was different. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Sure.
I mean, it's just, that, everything else matches with you. And the only change is that tree there replaces it. And you can see that's the outline of the box, and that's one. But other than that, everything. Mr. Tool, do you mind showing us, that to us, because we're going to be the ones voting on it? So just want to make sure we...
Yeah, I'll just kind of go down the line. So my blue circles are the same as what she had circled in her red, as far as what was removed. That one is the only difference. It's actually a little bit off our property, but we have an easement with the shopping center, and then we'll be replacing it with a new tree there. So in the, see that gray outline? That is that box, that stormwater box.
Got it. I'm good. Yep.
Do you do the same thing? So that would be the additional tree removed. That is the outline of the stormwater box, this little gray square. And then that would be the tree to replace that one that we had removed.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So questions for Mr. Tool on the last day plan? We'll start with Commissioner Reeves. Any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Johnston?
So the trees that are going to be planted along 74, how tall do they get, and how full do they get? Which ones are those in the pictures?
So the ones, so you'll have...
So these are oaks?
Yeah.
This one, and that one, and that one are oaks. These are dogwoods, this, this, and this. And that's a red bud. So, you know, dogwoods.
They thrive in the understory condition. They don't grow as fat and full, but they can actually grow taller.
Yeah. And so what we are calling out on the current plan, so this is not what they would get, but this is at planting. So at planting, the oaks have to be a minimum three-inch caliper and 10-foot height, and the dogwoods are two-inch caliper and seven-foot height. And that would be at time of planting, and then obviously, like I said, they would, they would grow from there. You actually already have some pretty good height there, so this is kind of fill-in below, but then obviously, they'll continue to grow.
I was just asking, like, visibility-wise, just how much is it going to, like, cover up the restaurant? Not that, most people on this road know it's there.
Yeah.
But just for visibility purposes, is it going to, you know, completely cover?
It shouldn't, because, I mean, like Laura was pointing out, the restaurant actually sits down a little bit. You have the retaining wall. So with the trees already being at seven or 10-foot high, at time of planting, you would have the view line underneath between, you'd have to have the trunks, obviously, but not the foliage would be up higher.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Rittenhour?
No questions.
And Commissioner Hamner?
No questions.
And I have none as well. Comments? Commissioner Hamner?
No comments.
Commissioner Rittenhour?
No comments.
Commissioner Johnston?
Just love all the colors, and I love all the different colors. I think it will look really, really good.
Yeah. Commissioner Reeves?
The same. It's really pretty. It's very colorful.
Sure. And ditto for me as well.
I don't have a poll. Mr. Chairman, yes. I motion that we approve new agenda item 23-09-02, the landscape plan for Chick-fil-A at 1222 Highway 74 South.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The ayes have it. Very good. All right. Seeing no workshop items, when will the next commission, planning commission meeting be?
We do have a meeting on the 25th. Mr. Criss will be in attendance, and he will be filling, fulfilling the remainder of your term.
Sure.
And we do have a public hearing at that meeting. So that, did I mention it's the 25th? Sorry.
Yeah, you did.
So we're set and ready for the second September meeting.
Very good. All right. Commissioners, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we stand adjourned.
Thank you so much for your...